Okay. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam, and we will be beginning a public hearing. I want to welcome everyone tonight. It's a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. The council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. How it will work is this: Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of the proposed bylaw, one at a time. The floor will then be opened to everyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that are pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak. I stress to all that this is a public hearing, that it's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But we have some rules that make this process work better, and the rules are as follows: It's not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might have a different perspective from your own. So we ask that everyone who speaks tonight, please restrict their comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We are asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak can do so. Speakers are permitted to speak more than once. If you've still got some good stuff, please get to the end of the line. We'll hear from everyone first, and then if anyone has more stuff they can add it at that point. We'll ask the audience to be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her points without interruption. And from that perspective, we find it works much better if no one claps, no one boos, no one cheers, no one jeers any of the speakers. It's sometimes unnerving enough to stand at the podium and offer your thoughts of a process that many people are unfamiliar with or uncomfortable with. We want to make it as comfortable as possible for everyone. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw before us at that point, that becomes abusive, or which becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. Please note that once the public hearing on an item is adjourned, the council can receive no further information about that item until either we pass it at fourth reading or we reject it. We can't receive any more information after we adjourn that item. So if you have some written information that you want to be part of the public record, please hand it in to the clerk's desk there prior to the adjournment of an item. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council can give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda, as well as a range of items on the city council agenda. However, if during the public hearing council requests further information related to an item or requests that it be deferred, consideration of that item will be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. I will now call on Ms. Burnham to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item 1 is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 325 Therrien Street from RS1, one-family residential, to RT1, two-family residential. This is bylaw number 4632.
Your Worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dollywell, major project planner with the city. The site is located mid-block between Thomas Avenue and Hatchie Avenue, approximately 877 square meters in size, and located within the Millardville neighborhood plan area. Zoning on the site and to the north and west is RS1, one-family residential. Zoning to the east is RM1, two-story, low-density apartment residential. Zoning to the south is RT1, two-family residential. The site and surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the city's official community plan. The site currently contains a single-unit dwelling. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1, two-family residential, in conformance with the official community plan, to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to bylaw number 4632, 2016.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Please step forward. That podium there actually doesn't look like it has a microphone, but the top bar actually has a microphone. You'll be heard perfectly well if you speak loudly enough. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Zachal. I reside with my wife, Giselle, at 1112 Thomas Avenue. I've lived, actually, I grew up in 1112 Thomas Avenue. We actually, it was a family home. I've resided there since 1963, pretty well, since I was born. And I believe there is some documentation that we provided to all of you regarding that. I'm the little guy in the picture there. At this point, being rezoned to an RT1, we actually, I live on Thomas Avenue, which is higher than the building proposed to have the two homes put on that piece of property. Now, that will, actually, my main concern is that will directly interfere with our view that we have on our balcony. We use our balcony quite often. It is part of the existing building. And now with the rezoning, there will be two homes on that one piece of property. Having said that, I truly believe that there are areas where rezoning, I'm sure, it does work. In this particular case, I truly believe that it is not an area where there should be two homes that should be squeezed together on one lot like that. That lot is actually not, as, our lot is fairly large as well, only we're on a tiered lot, so it's unfortunate that we wouldn't rezone, I wouldn't rezone that begin with. It is a single-home, family-dwelling area, and I truly believe that it will be, if we're trying to condense homes in a certain area, that changes the landscape, that would really affect the look of the area. I understand that there's been a lot of rezoning and redevelopment in Millardville. Certain areas, on Casey, for example, there's row homes that actually work quite well in the area. They really dressed up the area nicely. In this particular case, I truly believe it would devalue, definitely devalue, our home and condense the area to where it's not, I truly believe that it's not a place that this condensation of homes should be allowed. I'm against the, that's my main concern. There's also another concern that if there is development there, that it could potentially, we did have a geotech survey our land. There is a retaining wall there. It's a concrete retaining wall. And it is, at this point, upon his review, he did think that if there's an issue with disturbing the ground, that retaining wall would come over. There's also potential, being that house has been there since 1963, there could be a potential also for the foundation of the home, that there could be potential damage to the foundation of that home. That is based on the geotech survey. That I would have to leave up to you, people here, to review and analyze. We are not, as I said, I've lived there. I was born there. Basically, my father built that home. And we are not in any way thinking of selling. I've lived in Coquitlam all my life. I truly believe Millardville is a superb area to live in. It is one of the original areas that started Coquitlam as a community, as a city. I've worked in Fraser Mills. My father worked in Canfor. And we've contributed to that area all our lives. And I really would like that area to be the same as it is without being condensed in homes. I understand that there's a need for more homes, but to condense homes on a lot that is now trying to be rezoned changes that community. It puts too many, too much condensation into that area. That area has been, I know a lot of the people around there. I know a lot of the families around there. And all I can say is that it will change our view of that area that I've grown up in. And I truly believe that that lot should be, I have no arguments on building a new home on the piece of property. That property is a large piece of property. They can put a very nice home on that piece of property. But to condense two homes on that property, it would, as I said, would change the landscape of the community. It just, in certain areas, it would fit. In this particular case, I truly believe it just does not fit within that community.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you go, though, I've got, there's a number of council members, including myself, that have questions. First of all, there aren't many of us who were born in that part of Coquitlam and grew up there. I have a couple of years on you, but that's not much. The, you just mentioned that you're fine with a house being built, and yet if a single-family home, typical of single-family homes that are built on property like that were built, it would, of course, obscure the view that you were talking about. It would be, I noticed the geotech report says excavation deeper than two feet, for example. Well, of course, any home that's built on the property would be an excavation deeper than two feet.
Absolutely.
And so I'm trying to understand, you'd be fine with a single home, even though it might block your view even more than the two homes that are proposed?
I don't believe so, because what you could do with that piece of property is actually, you could make a longer home. That home there right now that's existing is a small residence, a small home. If somebody were to actually rebuild on that lot, they could, the lot being deep, you could actually put the home further behind, towards the back or the rear of the actual lot, and make it longer. Obviously, they're going to excavate, and they will put in a secondary suite in at the bottom. Again, you would not be obscuring my view if the home was built, if a single-family home was built further back on the lot.
No, I get that, but almost all of the single-family homes built today, and I'm not saying that they have to, but they seem to choose to build 25 feet from the front yard, which is the, from the front setback, which means that it would be right where your house is, and whether it's two houses or one house. I'm just trying to understand that, that's all.
Well, the proposal is that, I understand, is that they were going to go an extra floor or an extra story higher. Right now, at this point, our balcony is basically level with the roof or just below the roof.
No, I understand. It's just typical of the houses that get built. They're built 35 feet tall because, whether they're, and in fact, the shorter ones are quite often the ones that are built on narrow lots because they don't need as much roof, but we're trying to get that.
If it was set back further, it wouldn't impede our view.
No, I understand. We can't force them to set their home back further. If it's a single-family home, I suspect it would be 25 feet from the front property. That's all. I'm going to go to Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Reed. Counselor Wilson?
Thanks, and I just wanted to let you know I really empathize with your situation. We've had a lot of people come to speak to us about, you know, their opposition to subdividing lots in Millardville. The challenge, I don't know, were you at all involved in the two-year consultation process to come up with the new plan in Millardville?
I was, it was brought to my attention, yeah.
So the city spent two years working with the neighborhood to come up with the new plan, and the plan was to allow subdivision of these types of lots, right? And so it's very difficult because a lot of people don't realize that that's what the plan was about, and that was what the community approved, and that's what council approved. And now we have developers buying lots based on our plan, and we have homeowners who don't realize that, well, I didn't know you could subdivide, right? So at least you kind of had an idea. But, so the challenge we're facing is, you know, we've approved this a long time ago. Developers have bought these lots based on our approval, and now we, you know, we have people like yourselves that are saying, well, this isn't the right spot, right? And it's very challenging. So I just wanted to know if you were aware of that process?
Counselor, I was aware of that, but as I said before, there are certain areas that I truly believe that, like row homes, for example, or like I mentioned on Casey, they did a great job down there, and they're still building some more. And there's some heritage homes that were down there as well.
I think we all agree with you. That's a nice area, but unfortunately, almost all of the rest of Millardville is zoned, or potentially zoned, for this kind of thing. My question was for our staff, the concerns that Mr. Zachal has about the foundation and the retaining wall, how do we normally deal with that in the construction of a new home beside a house like that? Is there anything that he should be worried about, or is there, you know, good policies in place to prevent any problems from occurring?
Mr. Dollywell?
Through Your Worship, staff do a review during the building permit phase for retaining, site grading, and we would be assured that everything is safe and no impacts are made to the adjacent property. The zoning bylaw does have a limit on retaining wall heights as well, at 1.2 meters. Sometimes they do get slightly higher if required, but we have the regulations in place to ensure that there's not a significant impact on the neighbor.
And if during the excavation something happened to his retaining wall, is there a deposit or a bond that the developer puts up to pay for those kind of damages?
Through Your Worship, the developer would be responsible to restore any damages on the neighboring property.
Yeah, the answer is no. We don't have the capacity to have a deposit for damage, to cover damage on not city property. We could do it on city property, but it would be a neighbor-to-neighbor dispute otherwise.
There's a process?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was all the questions I had.
Okay, Counselor Reed?
Thank you. How high, so if there were three stories, one would be, is your house two stories, like ground or a little bit in-ground and then a main floor?
Our home? Yeah, our home is actually on Thomas, which is the higher.
No, I know that, but so you've got a basement and then a main floor?
A basement and a main floor. And the main floor is basically at balcony level at this point. The balcony level is basically, if you walk into the home, you can basically walk right onto the.
Is your basement totally in-ground or half-in-ground?
It's half-in-ground.
Half-in-ground, okay. So bear with me one moment to staff, then, what is the height on this, the proposed buildings? I can't see it here, the three stories.
Through Your Worship, the maximum height is 7.3 meters, so two stories above grade in the RT1 zone.
How much would that make it over his house, basically? He'd be looking, his sightline then would be just looking at the bottom of the second floor, is that right?
Depending on where his elevation is, because he's saying he's at a higher elevation, it may, he should be looking at the second story of the house, presumably, yeah.
Okay, and as to the, when we have a rezoning like this, where we have a letter that's stating that there is some issue with a retaining wall, I don't know why we don't have some kind of a process or some kind of an agreement in writing that it's the developer that looks after this. I have difficulty with that. If you say it isn't there, it isn't there, but that's leaving the homeowners possibly having to go through civil suits with the person building, and that just doesn't seem fair to me. So if there's no process, that will do it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Mr. Boyd, please step forward.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. I look at this item, and every day I go for a walk.
If you could give your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name's Albert Boyd. I'm sure yous all know me. I live at 2340 Haversley.
Thank you.
I've lived there over 40 years. I've had a tax increase every year. We're going to face a 16% tax increase and more in the next five years, and I'm going to get down to why I object to this development. This development is like, this council keeps trying to throw or put, my analogy is, three liters of milk into a one-liter bottle, and you just can't do it. I was never in my area contacted about the so-called densification of Millardville. You know how it went through? I found out that everybody on council and every developer knew about it a year ahead of me. You know how I found out about? Looking to buy a house for my son. But that's just part of the story. But what bothers me with this council, you're so pro-development, you're trying to put this, three liters of milk into a one-liter jar. Can't be done. I'm going to give you a fact that happened on March 10th that really upset me. This has now become a safety issue with this council. You keep building up. On March 10th, I have to go for some heart tests at the Royal Colombian Hospital at quarter to 10:00, 9:45. I left my home at 8 o'clock. I got down to Burnett, just off here, and I could not get past a low-heat highway till after 10 o'clock. That's right, till after 10 o'clock. Should I have been having a heart attack, and I'm prone to them, I would have been dead. And that is unacceptable. I don't care, I don't know the owner, I don't know the developer, I don't care. Until we get rid of this congestion and do it properly, we should stop approving this needless densification. We should be looking after the people who paid for Coquitlam, such as myself, to do the part, to build the recedders. And what do we get instead? I hate to tell you, people all only interested in densification, and they don't care. Well, I care. This densification on this is not going to do anything for Coquitlam. Putting two small lots with every possible inch built upon is foolish. Because next you're going to come to me and say, "I want you to subsidize planting the trees in Coquitlam." "I want you to subsidize more rapid transit." Why? Just to raise taxes through densification? And while I go at it, and I'll be talking again tonight, I've done research, and there is not one city in North America or in Europe that can point to densification as a place to make housing more affordable. In fact, every place that has done it has had problems with cost rising. What you're doing today, you're not helping people live, raise families, and own property. Stop. Take a look at what you're doing. You're saying, "We're going to have two classes of people." You're all, every one of you are saying, "I want to benefit the rich and let those renters be subservient," because that's what you're doing. You're taking a single-family lot, making it four in this case, and you're going to only let the rich be able to own it. The rest of the serfs can live in a basement suite cramped in or in the laneway house.
You're going to have to wrap up now, or?
Okay, I'll wrap up, because I'll be back with the other densification. Thank you.
I'm sure you will. You've been against every development that we've ever proposed, so thank you, though.
That's not true.
Okay, my apologies, my apologies.
You should apologize to me, because that's not true. That's your bias.
I just apologized.
Yes, and I don't necessarily, and that was a health.
I remember you supported one. I remember that.
You're disappointed in your apology. It's another one of your snide remarks.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? A third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Now, before we get to the next item, the next item is item 2 at 965 DeLester. I will be absenting myself from this item. I do not in a conflict. It's an abundance of caution. I have family members that own property not far from this site, and so I will be stepping out of the room during the debate of this site. Acting Mayor Craig Hodge will take over the chair of the next item.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item, item 2, is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 965 DeLester Avenue from RS1, one-family residential, RT1, two-family residential, to RT1, two-family residential. This is bylaw number 4581.
Mr. Dollywell?
The site is located on the north side of DeLester Avenue, between Blue Mountain Street and La Blue Street. It is 3,035 square meters in size. Zoning on the site is split, the northern portion fronting Edgar. Zoning on the, zoning on the site is split. The northern portion fronting Edgar is zoned RS1, one-family residential. And zoning on the southern portion of the site, fronting DeLester, is RT1, two-family residential. Zoning to the north is RS1, one-family residential. Zoning to the south is RT1, two-family residential. And zoning to the west is RS1, one-family residential, and RT1, And zoning to the west is RS1, one-family residential, and RT1, two-family residential. And zoning to the east is RT1, two-family residential. The site and surrounding area is designated neighborhood attached residential in the city's official community plan. The site currently contains a single unit dwelling on the southern portion of the lot. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1, two-family residential, for the northern portion of the site in conformance with the official community plan to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into five single-family residential lots and one duplex lot. As a result, staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to bylaw number 4581, 2016.
Hey, are there any speakers to this item? And again, for the record, your name and address, please.
My name's Albert Boyd. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. If you look at that drawing up there, the one you had in the paper, it's incorrect. You're saying you want to put six, but it also includes the other lot. I don't think you can vote on that tonight, because you haven't let the public know. That is totally wrong, that drawing. Do you have any question, or are you going to try to proceed with the incorrect information given to the public, is my question to you.
I'm going to defer to staff, and I'm not sure what he speaks, but maybe you can explain the drawing, please.
Through your worship, the bylaw is rezoning the northern portion, RT1. The southern portion of the lot is already zoned, RT1. And the subdivision includes both the north and south for five single-family lots and one duplex lot.
But are you putting the five on that north... The six lots on the north one? Or are you putting six lots on the north and the south one? It's not clear. I went and walked by there.
Hey.
The signage isn't clear. You don't know what you're doing.
Okay, so it's one piece of property, but the zoning is split. Is that correct? So the zoning request is only applying to the north piece of the property, which is the part that faces on Edgar, and that one is proposed to go to three lots.
Is that six lots or three? It says here in the paper, six.
The top portion is going to three. The bottom portion... I'll let staff explain this.
Not what it says here, sir. That's six.
Through your worship.
Well, either you put it correct so I can talk to my neighbors about it and show them, or we redo it again. And I'm insisting you redo it again correctly. Not what you've got in the papers, not what the sign says down there.
Okay, what... Do we have a copy of what was in the paper, Mr. Johansson?
Right here. You want a copy?
No, I'm going to go to Mr. Johansson, who's the acting mayor of... Or the acting GM of planning. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Councilor Hodge. Yeah, so the subdivision is... There's six lots being proposed. In order to effect that, it's one property, and the rezoning that's in question tonight is the northern half of that one property to go from RS1 to RT1, which would facilitate the subdivision.
And so just to be clear, what we're being asked to vote on in terms of the zoning is just the rezoning of the top?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that's three lots. Is that clear? Is that for three lots? Because it says in here in the paper, six. It says five family single homes, each with a carriage house and one duplex. Five and one is six. Are we putting six in there? You got me so confused, and I've walked around the place for two hours.
Mr. Dolewell is going to provide additional clarity. Okay, thank you.
Through your worship, because the site is fronting both DeLester and Edgar, we wanted to give the community the honest truth about the development, which is six lots. Yes, this bylaw is only considering rezoning the lots to the north, fronting Edgar, for three lots, but the site will be subdivided to create six lots, the entire site that fronts both Edgar and DeLester Avenue.
That's not what you say in the paper, sir. You say, "Rzone the subject probably outlined in black on the map, mark Schedule A, bylaw 4581, from RS1 family residential to RS2," and then you go on to say, "to six lots." People don't know. They look at that.
Oh, just going to clarify. So it is only a rezoning of the upper lot, the upper half of the lot, which is currently RS1 to RT1, to facilitate three new lots. The lower section is already zoned, RT1, and therefore would permit those lots without coming to council. But to show the overall plan, we've included the part that they don't need to come to council for, so that the community can see the whole picture. But all we're really discussing tonight is the top portion that's currently... You see there, outlined in black.
Well, that's not what you said in the paper, and I'm come to talk about what I seen in the paper. It says you're going to zone that top one to six lots. That's what you're saying here in the paper.
I'm going to go to Councilor Marsden for clarification.
I believe I saw staff at the newspaper. Put it on the screen so we can all see the same thing that Mr. Boyd is referring to, please.
Yeah, I know. We're going to see what was...
I want to see this specific piece that's in the newspaper. Thank you, sir.
Right there.
Can you get that up on the screen?
Only showing the top.
Oh, now it's all blue.
And that is what we're being asked to rezone tonight?
Yes, and it is. If approved, the application would facilitate the development of six-lot subdivision for five single-family homes, each with a carriage house and one duplex. So I don't know where the duplex is going on that part in black and where the six lots are. I can't figure that out.
That's right. It's a mistake.
Okay, I'm going to just give a second. We're going to... Staff's going to look at that. I see what the intent is. Okay, Mr. Johansson.
Okay, so the rezoning that's before us is asking for, from RS1 to RT1, for that northern portion of the one lot that fronts both Edgar and DeLester. If this rezoning is approved, it would facilitate a six-lot subdivision of the entire property.
Well, that's not what you say in the paper.
Sir, if I may? That's exactly what it says in the paper, and as Mr. Dolewell pointed out, we want to make sure it's clear to the public that with the rezoning of that northern portion of the lot, according to our zoning bylaw and our servicing policies, that if it goes to RT1, it facilitates six lots that are served from a common lane. So that's what the intent of this is tonight, and it's there to facilitate the six-lot subdivision.
My point is that I don't know if your intent is correct, and I'll tell you why I don't know if your intent is correct. I walk around Coquitlam... Just let me explain why I'm so upset about this. I walk around Coquitlam for two hours every single solitary day, and every day I visit a different part of Coquitlam where I live. And I've been at this council, talked about your density, and you tell me they're going to build gradus to park their cars in. Well, you know what, on these new ones with the carriage houses and all that? Hate to tell you something. Over half of those gradus aren't used. They're used for stores, the parking's on the street. The exact thing that I could name, the councilors who told me it wouldn't happen. You want to go down Foster Avenue and take a look? I want this to be done correctly with the correct information in the paper. You cannot vote on it now. I want things done right in this district for a change, not rammed down our throats with high density at any cost.
Okay. All right. I think we're going to have some questions from council. I gave you some extra time, because we were spending a lot of time trying to get some clarification for you, and I appreciate the point you're raising here. So we're just... We're going to talk. In the meantime, I've got Councilor Mars... Or, sorry, I've got Councilor Reed and then Councilor Marsden who have questions or comments here.
Okay, I do find it confusing the way it's written in the paper.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Reed.
I do find it confusing the way it's written. It leaves that open to interpretation, but my question to staff is, the part that is RT1 that we're rezoning, I get that, that's for three lots. The part that is already zoned, I see that they've developed it into two single lots and one duplex lot. Is that correct? And does that ever come to council for approval?
Through your worship, that is correct, although, yes, you're correct, it will not come to council for approval.
Well, that's not making me a very happy girl. This whole... If you look along that street, we're looking at duplex, 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 duplex. Why aren't we putting two more duplexes in instead of little skinny houses in a single and other duplex?
Mr. Johansson.
Yes. So again, the intent of what's before council tonight is the rezoning on the north...
Forget that.
But the subdivision is a subsequent step after that?
Yes.
And the RT2 zone has a number of options available, including small lots, singles of 10 meters wide, and also duplex.
But we never get to see those.
If they're consistent with... If they have the zone, they move forward through the subdivision advisory committee, and the approving officer is able to...
So then we get a topsy-turvy community. I get a whole street full of duplexes, then two skinny guys, and then another duplex. And to me, that isn't shaping a community, and that's what my job is. So if this never comes to me, and it's going forward as one, then it leaves me no option to forget it. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Councilor Marsden.
Thank you. I drove the area, and I took a look at it. It makes... I understand what's proposed here. This said, clearly, the advertisement that we've got here, because it fronts on two streets, gives a different impression to Mr. Boyd than perhaps is intended. So my question, whether it be to our city management or our legal department with regards to the notification itself, should there be... Does this meet the requirement of notification, or should there have been additional information to indicate that the proposed six homes would be on the entire site? Because again, you can just see the address of 965 down in DeLester, but the property, for someone looking at it at glance, it would appear the property fronts Edgar, which it does. So do we meet the provincial requirements, the statutory requirements with regards to notification?
And I'll look to staff.
Just if I could provide some overview comments. I have not reviewed in detail the exact advertising, but what I believe is appropriate is the word facilitate. If you had simply said approve to allow three lots, that could be considered misleading from a different perspective. So it's a judgment call. If council feels that it is confusing and wants to redo the process again, council's free to reject this rezoning and ask us, or put in a bans and ask us to re-advertise, but we believe that it meets the legal intent of what is needed for these kind of advertisements. And it would also be okay for you to approve the rezoning as is.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Zerillo.
Well, thank you. Well, I'm just looking at the initial report that came in February, February 24th, where we moved this to come to public hearing, and the picture... The picture does show all six lots. I'm just wondering kind of what came... What changed or what might have happened between February 24th, when we moved this to go to public hearing, and the way that it was presented in the newspaper? Because in the public hearing doc... In the request in February for the public hearing document, Attachment 2 shows the whole subject property. The breakdown shows all six lots. So I'm just kind of wondering how we moved from what we saw as a council on Feb. 24th versus what came on...
Nothing has changed. The proposed development is for six lots, but rezoning is only needed on half the site. So if you didn't show all six lots, I think there would be a very easy argument that, from some, that would say, well, they didn't know six lots were proposed, only... They thought only three lots were proposed. So what the staff tried to do is give a holistic picture of what was truly going to happen if council approved the rezoning. But because half the lot is already zoned as appropriate, they only need zoning for the other half. And so it is... We believe that the legal requirements of this whole process was met, and it is simply a judgment call as if you feel that there's confusion or not. We don't think there was confusion. We think that staff went over and above what they needed to do to describe the real intent of what was going to happen with this development.
Thank you.
And if I may, again, the subject tonight is on the rezoning of that portion of the property, and typically, even with the... When you have a pending subdivision, where the approving officer gives preliminary layout approval, that would accompany the rezoning, just as information to, again, be transparent about what the rezoning could facilitate in the future.
Okay, so before we move on, so if the RT1 for the northern portion of the lot that faces Edgar doesn't get rezoned today, what's the possibilities for the south portion of the lot that does not need a rezon?
Mr. Dolewell.
Through your worship, you'd be able to build two single-family lots and the duplex lot, and then you would have the northern portion subdivided as one large lot.
And would you be able to get the through lane on the back? Because right now, we don't have a through lane on the backside. So which lot owns giving up the space for the through lane? The north portion of the lot or the south portion of the lot?
The lot is splitting them evenly in half, and we're also getting dedication on Edgar Street as part of this.
No, but if the RT1 for the northern portion of this does not happen, do we get the lane anyway? And I'm trying to understand, if we just leave it as it is, are we going to get the lane met from both sides or not?
Through your worship, yes, you would still get the lane.
And who has to give it up?
Through your worship, the property owner, as there is only one property owner.
So he'll have to split? He'll have to give up the lane no matter what happens?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you. I know in public hearings on rezoning, it's always important for me to keep reminding myself that specifically what we're doing is looking at land use and rezoning land for land use. We don't specifically... And this is something that I want just clarification on. It's why I'm raising it. While the rezoning applications are almost always accompanied by projections on what the developer wants to do with the property once the rezoning is allowed, is that technically part of the law, that that has to be part of this? Or is it just something that the city has done as good practice to add on information about what the impact of this would be, given the current discussion with the developer? Or, again, to restate it, or does really the only specific legally mandated information that we actually really need to know is... And the public needs to know is the change in land use, the very simple change in land use. What's our actual legal obligation there? Can anybody answer that?
Mr. Dolewell.
Through your worship, legally, we'd be just speaking about the RT1 rezoning and not the development on site. The city is trying to be as transparent... The city is trying to be as transparent as possible and provide as much information as we can to the public when considering these items.
That's what I thought. And, and I know that practically all the time when we get down, bogged down, or it's not necessarily bog, bog has a negative implication, when we dig down into the subject about whether or not a certain piece of property should be rezoned, we actually aren't talking about the land use per se, but the development that is proposed to go along with that land use. And I think that's something to keep in mind. And as specifically, even specifically for this particular piece of property as well, keep that in mind, we're talking about the land use. Now, speaking of land, Mr. Dallowell, you opened your comments 20 minutes ago, talking about the, I believe the number of square meters of the, of the site in question. Was that both the upper and lower part of the site or just the upper part? I think you said 3,000 and something square meters.
Through your worship, that is the entire site.
I, I thought so, okay. And that's, and I wanted to raise that now because we received a letter from somebody else, not in conjunction with the comments from Mr. Poy here, but somebody else who was talking about this being an acre site. And an acre site is actually closer to 4,000 square meters. So this is about three quarters of an acre, a 3,000 square meter site, just for point of information, get that on, because it may well be that this hotly worded letter we got connected with this comes up for discussion as well. That was from Mrs. Sauvay, talking about acre sites. And this is not an acre site, it's significantly less. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for our, for the speaker? Otherwise, I'll let Mr. Poy return to his seat, because I think the questions are for staff.
This is not a question for staff.
Okay. You can come back after if you want. I'm going to call for more speakers, but I'll just, I won't leave you standing there while we have this discussion. Thank you.
I got all night.
Okay. Mr. Councillor Wilson.
I was going to make the same comment that councillor O'Neill made about public hearings being about zoning and not about the actual project that's going on there. But the other thing I was going to say is if there's any confusion here, excuse me, in my mind, the clarity makes it a lot more palatable, right? We're not talking about putting six houses on one lot, we're talking about putting six houses on two large lots. And so if the city was trying to deceive somebody, they would, they would be doing it in a much different way. There was no deception. And once the confusion is clarified, I think it makes the project a lot more palatable. So I'm fine with, with us going ahead and discussing this and considering it in this public hearing rather than referring it to a, to a later public hearing.
Do you have any questions?
Nope.
I, I have a question. Looking at this now, if this project goes ahead, the lane is completed, does that now create a complete lane? And does that then enable garbage collection on this lane? Because I suspect that a number of lanes on the south slope, two years ago, when we switched to automated collection, they lost their, their pickup because they were dead-end lanes. Does this now open this lane up and allow for improved garbage collection in that neighborhood? If there's somebody from engineering that can answer that for me?
Through your worship, it's probably correct. Once the lane is constructed, we have to check if the balance of the lane is passable by the large garbage trucks. And if so, then yes, we can move the garbage collection to the lane.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wilson, your favorite, or councillor Zerillo.
Yeah, I, I think I would like to, I think I would like to move that we, we send this back for another advertisement. And the reason I'd like to do it is because I don't see anyone on our list here, none of the applications that came in for the people that live on Edgar. And if we talk about land use, I totally understand that we're talking about land use, but land use doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens in consideration in the context of the whole neighborhood. And if I look at the northern portion of this site, every, every person on Edgar, from Blue Mountain to the creek at Nelson, is an RS1, is a RS1 zoning. Now, on the south side, the Delestra side, Delestra, that's fine, it's already an RT1. But I think we need to point out to the residents on Edgar that this is the first change on their street from Blue Mountain to Nelson. I don't think we necessarily have to say that. But I would like to see this go back for publication, to talk, to make more highlight of the fact that Edgar is going to be affected by an RT1 zoning in an RS1 neighborhood, on an RS1 street. So I'd like to make that motion, that we send it back for advertisement.
Because we're in the public hearing portion, I don't know that we can actually make, we'd have to complete the public hearing, close the public hearing, and have this discussion when it comes time to vote.
Exactly. Really? Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Dallowell, do you have anything that you want to add, or we're fine? Okay. Any other speakers on this item? Please come forward.
Hello, City Council. My name's Mary Sansovo. I live at 265 Leblu, and I'm here on behalf of my mother who lives at parcel 122 there, so right on the corner next to this proposal change. I'd like to just describe a bit the neighborhood for those of you that maybe don't know it as well as we have. My parents built their house on that corner in the mid-'60s, and my mom still lives there. It's a really lovely neighborhood, it's nice and quiet, people walk, there are dogs. My mom's always had a huge garden that we've benefited as a family. I say that because it's typical of that neighborhood, that people really enjoy the green space. And the density that's proposed for this section, I think, is a little high. I say that because, as councillor just pointed out, it is a change to that start of the zoning. It's all RS at this point. And we think that densifying to three lots plus carriage houses plus potential suites is really going to change that neighborhood and the traffic and, and increase traffic on the lane and in the general corner as well.
Just to clarify, it's a carriage house or a suite? You can't have both?
I know legally that that's the case, and of course, I too live in that neighborhood, and we see that there's some breaches to that. So I, I respect that that, that is the law. I'm just saying that people do find alternatives to that. The other relevant piece is, as I've understood, is that the bottom half of this one parcel is already RT1, and so I respect that, that people can develop that as per the plan.
Yes.
As a whole, though, I think that that increases the, the density of the whole parcel, and that's the change to the overall neighborhood. That's my only point. I think that it's, it's too big a change in the middle of, of an RS1 area that's really stable. Many of the residents in that area, like my parents, have lived there for, for decades. And I totally appreciate the development there, and it's, it's the degree of the development that, that I'm questioning as to why six lots in that one parcel, when perhaps there could be a just slightly reduced area covered, so allowing for more gardens, more, more trees in that area. So it's a balance that, that we're asked after. We're pre, like I said, we're pleased to develop, to, to support moderate development or what's allowed, just it's the increased portion that we have a question on. And so, yeah, balancing the rest of the neighborhood is what's at stake here for us.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward, and your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Comter, I'm the consultant for this project. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I just wanted to speak to some of the comments that were made to council tonight. This property is an anomaly, as councillors have been there probably over the years. You don't run into too many split zone properties. Generally, you're dealing with a property that has a zone. You rezon the entire property and you know what you get. The difficulty here is we have a split zone property, it's one property with two zones on it, but it allows two different uses. The north half is an RS1, I believe it is, and the south is an RT1. So what we're trying to do is follow the, the plan that has been proposed for this area. In terms of density, we could subdivide the current north portion of the property into two lots. We're asking to subdivide it to three lots. So we're asking for one additional lot for this development. We could have mirrored the south portion of the project as well. We decided to stay with the larger lots on the north side that front onto Edgar Avenue, to give it a bit more transition, so that there's a bit of a larger lot to the north, the transition to the existing larger, larger lots that exist to the north of the property. So what, what we're asking for is six lots, three on the north side that front onto Edgar. We would be dedicating the south half of Edgar Drive, which currently is not, is not dedicated at this stage. We would also be dedicating the lane, which would provide that continuity from Leblur to, and I forgot the name of the other road, at the other end of the project. So the south portion of the property is already zoned, RT1, so it has gone through this process and has received rezoning to the RT1 zone. So as mentioned by staff, the intent was to show the public in terms of what the overall project would be when this project is completed. So in terms of compliance, we believe that we're being compliant with the intent of the city's plan for this particular area here. We're not asking for anything beyond which, that which has been approved by this council. And as mentioned earlier, it, it gives developers direction in terms of what they can and cannot do with properties within the city of Coquitlam. We believe that we are in compliance, compliance with that, we're not asking for more than that. Maybe I can just open that if there's any questions of myself.
Okay, well, I see councillor Neil has a question. I don't know if it's sort of staff or the speaker, but councillor Neil.
Well, it was something that follows on a question that you made, you, you asked, and a point that you just made regarding completion of the lane running from Leblu westward. If it, if it would continue all the way west, it would join with Blue Mountain, but it'd have to go through some properties to do that. So I believe that that lane actually, just before it gets to Blue Mountain, makes a turn to the left and joins back into Delestra, and that's how it gets completed. So that's, there's nodding over from the, the staff counter, so just in case there's any confusion about that, the lane actually, it doesn't go all the way through to Blue Mountain, it turns south and joins up to Delestra there. That was the only point that I wanted to make, just to share with everybody.
And, and just to be clear, one of the questions I was going to ask, I think I heard you covered it, I'll just check with staff. If we were to do nothing with this application, we've already heard that the lower portion is already zoned RT1, so through the normal subdivision process, which is just a technical process conducted by staff, they could put the three buildings across the, the bottom, duplexes or two small multif, or two small single-family, that's allowed within the zoning. So that could be done without coming to council, without a public hearing, because that's already approved. Is that correct? On the top, it's RS1, is that lot big enough that it could be subdivided into two single-family RS1 lots? And if so, would that process take place as a simple subdivision application and not be brought to council? In other words, they could go five lots altogether without coming to public hearing?
Through your worship, that is correct.
So they could go, they could split without any further process? They could have two RS1s at the top and three RT1s across the bottom? So the whole purpose of this is whether it's going to be a total of five or a total of six? And that decision is being made of whether we're allowing three at the top or they just go for the two that they're allowed to have?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? I think we've got a handle on it now. Okay. Any other, sorry, did you, did you have any other comments that you wish to make? Okay, thank you. I'll call for any further speakers to this item. Are there any further speakers to this item? And I'll call one more time, third call. Are there any more speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
As the item is closed, I will.
I just, I just, I just. Madam Carter.
Thank you, worship. The next item, item three, is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw in number 3,000 in order to rezone the property at 939 Walls Avenue from RS1 one-family residential to RT1 two-family residential. This is bylaw number 4654.
The site is located mid-block between Blue Mountain and Leblu Streets. It's 976 square meters in size and located within the Millardville Neighborhood Plan area. Zoning on the site and zoning to the north, east, and west is RS1 one-family residential. Zoning to the south is RS1 one-family residential and RT1 two-family residential. The site and surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the city's official community plan. The site currently contains a single unit dwelling. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1 two-family residential in conformance with the official community plan to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second, third, and fourth and final readings to bylaw 4654, 2016.
Thank you. I have two speakers on the list here, beginning with Richard Place at 937 Walls.
Good evening, Mayor, Stewards and councillors. My name is Richard Place, currently reside at 937 Walls, directly to the west of the property in question. My family and I just moved into this house in February. A few weeks ago, we saw a lovely sign posted in front of 939, saying there was a public hearing. And I went to investigate the items online, I was a little shocked to see what was coming down the line. The house we live in is, is a small house. It's a single level with a basement suite. There's a tenant who's been in the basement suite for 10 years. My wife and I recently had to move because we were on 1021 Rochester, and the owner of that duplex decided to renovate our side for his family's purposes. So we were renovated. Difficult thing to deal with in Coquitlam right now, because there is very, very little for small families on a modest income in rent, very little. We got very lucky to find 937 Walls. It's a very older home. It has a modest backyard. The address directly to the east of it, which is the address in question, has been apparently abandoned for about six months, sitting empty. The yard is overgrown and uncontemplated, the property is not being taken care of at all. Just to give people some background on this street in particular, it is a dead-end street. It dead-ends before the creek and turns into an alleyway that occurs back around south of Walls Avenue. There are 26 homes on this street. Excluding the two homes in question, there is one, I'm going to say for lack of a better term, monster house, which I would describe as a three-story house, which takes up the vast majority of the property and is rather tall. There's one that's currently under construction and is not finished. There is a ghost home further down the street, I don't recall the exact address, it's on the south side, apparently which sits empty, has a car in front of it that is actually growing moss on it, and apparently the property owner visits every few months to cut the grass. Otherwise, there's nobody living in the house. Also on this street, there are two tear downs, one of which is already sold, which is almost directly across from our house, so I believe it would probably be 934 or 936. And there's another older home that is in the, has been pretty much abandoned and is going to be sold as well. The application I see here looks to turn this lot into what was a single-family going into one. into one, because of the carriage houses, correct? Back of this lot, is that 945? Either way, so it's going to go from one family to four. The alleyway behind the lots in question is extremely narrow. You can get a small vehicle down it. On the north side of the alley, there is a drainage ditch. And on the south side, all of the lots have rather tall fences. My concern is not so much about the erection of buildings on the properties as the... My wife's lived in Coquitlam since she was a teenager. I've been here for like 10 years. But in the last couple of years, I think everybody's noticed a really drastic change in developers snapping up properties and leveling them. Trees, house, foliage, bushes, grass, animals, everything is completely bulldozed on every lot. I haven't seen a tree saved anywhere, including the lot directly south of Porter Elementary, which had no less than six extremely large trees.
Stay on this property, though, okay?
I understand, but I'm getting to the more general epidemic is if I was a tree in this neighborhood, I'd be really worried because none are being saved anywhere. And these are 200, 300-year-old trees. These are not small trees. It takes you a couple hundred years to replace those trees. To my point, the fence line between 937 and 93 line is lined with 20 hemlock trees, 20 directly on the fence line. So the moment this place gets bulldozed, our family is going to be disrupted for as long as that takes. And I can just imagine the devastation from those trees being ripped up. And from what I've seen from development in the last couple of years, I have zero hope that a single one of those is going to be saved. On this block alone, we've got six developments in some form of process, not to mention the fact that these are going to be subdivided into two lots. I'll speak to 945 as well. We signed a year lease because we had to. It's the only way we're going to get a place to live in this community. And quite frankly, at this point, I'm regretting it. You've got nowhere else to go. And I think that city council has really lost touch with the street-level impact this is having on small families. My daughter goes to Porter Elementary. She's seven, turning eight. This is, I'm not the only person having this discussion on the school ground with their parents. Everybody is. Our very good friends who have a daughter in her class are selling their house because they're crazy not to. They have a large lot. It's going to be torn down, and they're probably going to move to Mid Meadows or Maplewood. And that's the sad impact of this kind of development is having on families that go to school, that work in the neighborhood, that go to the Porter Coffee Store, shop at Eno Bakery up on Ridgeway, which I'm sure a lot of people think we're not going to be here anymore. Oh, by the way, this was today's mail. Just today, Homes by Joy, team Leo, pre-report on Coquitlam home prices. You're curious about what your Coquitlam home may be worth? There's an easy way to find out. Thankfully, I haven't had anybody knock on my door in a few months. That's really upsetting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Our next, next, thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Kenning at 946 Rochester, almost directly behind.
Hello, my name's Tara Kenning. I live at 946 Rochester Avenue. And that is directly across the lane from 945 Walls. I sent in something by email, and I'm not sure if you also want a hard copy. I read in the...
We do have it.
You've got it, okay. So I'm speaking about both properties because they're beside each other. And I am not, to begin with, I'm, oh, okay. I should start with where my house is situated. It's a very old house, and it's situated at the back of our property, so we're close to the lane. And the reason is because when it originally was built, I believe the lot went right through to Walls. And that was subdivided when the lane went through, so our house is very close to the lane. So the proposal for carriage houses affects us greatly. And I also want to say, I'm not really against all development, but I am in favor of responsible development. The existing proposal for these two lots, RS1, to become four RT1 lots with four single-family houses. And let's not fool ourselves, most new development includes a basement suite or a mortgage helper, whether it's legal or not. So we're talking about a single-family house that really is two families plus four carriage homes. And presumably, these will be on the lane. I think this is irresponsible development. So the proposal is taking two single-family houses and creating 12 smaller units.
Ma'am, the proposal is taking one single-family home and creating...
I'm talking about the two lots.
We can only talk about the one. I get what you're, I get what you're talking about.
Well, I don't think you want me to come up here twice and say the same thing.
Okay, and it's not 12 units.
So I'm talking about the two lots that are directly behind me and adjacent. I'm sorry.
And I'll let you...
But let's look at it together because that's a lot more density, anyway.
And we have to look at them separately.
Okay, I understand.
Sorry.
The proposal, okay, the reasons I don't agree with it is the laneway is narrow, it's gravel, and it has a ditch. I think that only full laneway paving, curbing, and not just the section proposed for development with carriage houses should be done by the city and the developer. You should also be, the carriage houses should be offset 15 feet from the lane. Now, I see as an example, the laneway houses on Dansey that are on, behind Rona, they're pretty much flush with the lane. So I don't know where these would be situated, but I'm guessing they'd be close to the lane. And I don't think that they should be offset 15 feet. And there's no way this lane can support cars and whatnot without a full paving and curbing and widening. And I also believe these two RS1s, now I know I can't speak to both, but it shouldn't be, okay, forget it, it should be the RS1.
I'm allowing you.
Yeah, doesn't matter. In conclusion...
I urge you not to characterize it as 12 units because...
I know. Okay, so we'll take it, make it six. So you're taking one to six.
No, you missed my point. It's not, the application is not for six.
I know.
It's for four. And I recognize what you're saying.
One to two single-family plus a carriage house plus basement suite, in all honesty.
No, it's actually impermissible, and we are very strict about impermissible suites. We recognize that there are illegal suites.
I apologize.
But if they're capable of being permitted, they're considered to be non-conforming. We don't allow a basement suite. And if you ever phone us and say that house with the carriage homes, it has a basement suite, we'll be on them like...
Okay. Well, my point is, the lane doesn't really support carriage houses at this point.
Yeah.
In conclusion, I would like to see affordable housing proposals, and that doesn't include monster houses. And I also find it ironic that I'm going through this process and I'm responding as a community. I think I should come up here. As you can tell, it's very difficult. But when a big house is proposed on one of these old big lots, there's no notice to people.
We can't, we can't give you any notice.
So I find that ironic. I'd like to see these houses, I'd like to see responsible development, and I would like to see the families living in this neighborhood using the existing infrastructure, which is great. The schools, you want to fill up the schools, you want the rec centers used. I get it. You want to have families in the central neighborhood. And thank you very much for listening.
I do appreciate it. There's, I see a question from councillor Wilson.
This is for the staff, so...
Thank you, though.
I drove down that lane, and it is very narrow. There is nothing in either one of these applications about widening the lane or doing any improvements to the lane that I could find. Is there any expectation that the lane would be improved at all?
Through your worship, the lane will be improved behind both 939 and 945 Walls. The right-of-way is currently six meters, and the ditch will be filled in.
That's it.
Just on the stretch of this proposal.
Yes, this proposal and the next proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council questions? No. That's the only two speakers I have registered, so if anyone else would like to speak to this item, are there any other speakers to this item? Mr. Poy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Albert Poy. I live at 2340 Haversley. I've lived in Coquitlam roughly 45 years. Now, I'm not against development, even though most of you think I am, but I want development to be done with some consideration. If I look at what you're doing on Wall Street, 939, you're going to make two small lots. You're going to put a basement suite or a carriage house. You're going to walk away and say, "Great, we did good. All you've really done is tried to pour three liters of milk into a one-liter container, and it's spilling over. We've got congestion." And yes, I'm worried about getting across low heat highway. Should I don't make it one day, I will look at legal action against this council. I'm letting you know that in public. When I look at this, you're going to be putting so many more cars. And what really bothers me is the taxes that we have to pay to subsidize this type of development. Give you an example. Density in the world does not equal affordability. Not one of you can show me a city that you did that, yet you keep preaching it. It's not true. It's false. And I challenge you now, with this one here, show me where density equals affordability. What you're saying is only rich people should have property. Well, I reject that notion. If you have to be rich to house your family, and that's what it is in Coquitlam with our density, it's not a good neighborhood anymore. Because you're saying, "I want those poor people to come, to clean our kitchens, to be our waiters, and I want them living in my basement suite or my carriage house, sucking in over half their money for rent." That's what we're doing in Coquitlam. And I want this council to think about that. The person who doesn't do it, take that, if I look at the next five years, we will be having rent increases based, or property increases, based on our December financial of 16 to 20 percent. Yes, no, Mayor?
You actually have to stick to the item that we're on.
We're on density. That's what we're talking about. And I challenge you, every time I speak, you don't like anybody mentioning taxes.
Actually...
Oh, I'm sorry, taxes are part of bland use.
When you, when you come to our open houses and our dialogues about taxes and our budget, you can talk about that. But right now, we're talking about 939.
And that's what I'm talking about. Density at 939 is going to relate to increased taxes. And yes, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I mean to every open house I know about. Every single one in the last five years. So please do not, that insults me when you refer to me as not being informed. I'm very well informed.
I didn't say you weren't informed, sir. Go ahead.
Okay.
On this application.
And we will be subsidizing this density at 939. I'll give you an example why I believe that. We're just given 17 and a half million dollars to build a new recreational center for the density at Coquitlam Plaza. So I ask, in Millardville, what are we going to have to contribute to their new recreation center? And yes, we will need one. Again, it'll be increased taxes. And I'm sorry, I can't afford personally a 20 percent increase in my taxes the next five years, because that's what you're going to tell me I need. And yes, I want people to live here, but I want them to be families, not just the rich. If you have any questions, I'll go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be referring to the next one, too, on more, on the taxes related to 945 Walls.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And our budget actually this year went up 2.29 percent, not 16 percent. But are there any other speakers to this item? Oops, sorry, did you have something councillor O'Neill?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Wasn't sure if it was on or not. It was just a question to staff based on one of the questions, the points that Mr. Poy raised. The current lot is 29 meters by 33 meters, which I presume would allow the construction of a very large house. The proposal now is to have two smaller lots, 14.4, almost 15 meters by 33 meters, which would allow a construction of a house that's quite a bit smaller, based on our site coverage allowable and our regulations regarding that. And I want confirmation of that, just for the record, that the larger house would be allowed on that one large lot, and you couldn't build a house that large on either of these smaller lots. Is that correct?
Mr. Dallow.
Through your worship, that is correct.
Okay, so now I'm just going to make a, make a point that I don't need to ask staff for. That large house would be way more expensive than that small house. We know what very large 6,000, 7,000 square foot homes sell for versus what 3,300 square foot homes sell for. So just on that point, it's, on its surface, a more affordable house. It may still be 1.4 million dollars, but it's not 2.6 million dollars. And that's just a point I want to make. So it is more affordable. Thank you. And that's not even taking into account the more affordable rent, the rent, the rental options provided by the carriage homes, which are a very attractive place for many people to live, just as a matter of fact, not opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? If you'll just sit down for a moment, and we'll just go through anybody else that wants to speak that hasn't spoken yet, and then we'll get you up here, I promise. Any, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time? Okay, sir, why don't you come on up?
I have to really take issue with councillor O'Neill's comments about carriage houses being more affordable for families like mine. We should just, I guess, get rid of the majority of our possessions and just squeeze ourselves into a carriage house that's really making the whole situation completely impersonal. And I know it's very easy at Arms, at Arms Link to say that we can build a much larger house in a large lot. 1.4 million, 2 million, that doesn't make a difference to me. The roof height's going to be the same, whether it's one house or two, but you know what? The developer's going to make a lot more money if that lot's divided into two. Let's talk about the elephant in the room, which is developers. This is what this city has been about for the last couple of years. Vancouver, Coquitlam, everywhere else in Lower Mainland is on the developer gravy train right now. And that's why when someone listed their house on the corner of School House in Austin in February, in three days, they had 21 offers. They had listed the house at just shy of $1 million. It went for 1.5 with zero conditions, like that. Three days, 21 offers, for 50 percent more than the original listing price.
Okay, and...
That's a fact.
You have to relate it somehow to this project, sorry.
It's related to the general epidemic of developer frenzy in this town. I just showed you three realtors. Realtors are knocking on people's doors, asking to buy their old houses because they know they can flip into a developer and make a quick buck. And the developers are frothing at the mouth because they know that they can build a maximum-sized house on that lot, the maximum square footage to the edge as far as they can build. No trees are being saved. No trees are being saved, there's no green space anywhere. For the most part, these yards are being paved. Just take a look at any, half the houses are going to be, the list is one of the worst.
Sir, you have to relate it to the project somewhat.
This is completely related to the project.
You've just described a monster house on a big lot, and this proposal is for subdivision.
I'm expecting either one or two.
And if they do one, they don't have to ask our permission, that's all.
Well, that's fine, and that's really...
Councillor O'Neill, his point was that, I suspect either way, the house that's there now is not going to be there for long, and there will either be a monster house, and it will be less...
One gigantic monster house, two gigantic monster houses, doesn't make a lot of difference.
And that was his...
Nobody's addressed the issue, the fact that I raised, that there is 20 conifers on that fence line, and nobody's given me any assurance that a single one of those is going to survive. Can anybody tell me if any of those trees are going to make it?
Sir, Mr. Dallywell.
Through your worship, as part of this development, the applicant will have to contact the neighbor for the trees that are along the property line and seek permission if they are on both property lines, like straddling the property line, and if they are within his property entirely, they will have to, if it's not in the building envelope, will try to retain as many trees as possible. As well, the applicant will be required to replace trees that are taken down.
So the trees would be subject to the tree management bylaw if they're on his property, and if they're straddling the property, they'll be subject to the tree management bylaw and the cooperation with the neighbor.
Through your worship, that is correct.
Which is lovely on paper, but I haven't seen a single one of these properties save a tree yet.
There are quite a few actually saved trees.
I haven't seen one.
Okay, that's fine.
I've been to a lot of them. So this is our fence. This is the tree, literally, physically against the fence line. 20 of them. These aren't 10-year-old trees, 20-year-old trees. The average girth is probably about that big.
So they're about 40-year-old trees?
Forty-five. So it's going to be another 50 years before those are replaced. And I can just imagine how far the root system goes. Pretty far. You rip that tree out, and that's a good couple of meters into our yard, which we spent the lovely last week of nice weather, my wife was off. We didn't go anywhere for spring break. We cleaned up our yard and did some gardening.
We all understand the angst.
I don't know that this council does.
We listen to you and...
It hasn't been evidenced by the bulldoze-cut-and-clear mantra that every developer, and this street is one of the worst. You really need to take a drive down it and just have your...
I was down at both last weekends.
For example, Google Map the pictures from last year. That was, it's not finished yet, it was a bulldozed lot at that time, so. I know, it's not dropping.
Councillor O'Neill.
Yeah, and I thank the mayor for allowing the latitude of this, the points that the speaker is making because I think he reflects a lot of concern that's generally in Metro Vancouver because of the incredibly hot market. And if you'd allow me, I just want to ask him a question. And I know what the answer is, and he knows what the answer is, but I think we need to get this on the record. When somebody lists a home for $1 million and then it sells after 21 offers for $1.5 million in three days, and you're decrying that as emblematic of developer greed, of a council wanting to bulldoze, whatever, but are you aware of any single law, regulation, or rule that forces the owner of that house to sell for that high amount of money?
It's not about that.
No. Are you aware of anything that forces anybody to sell?
Limiting the price that you can sell your property for, no. I am aware of city bylaws that limit what you can do with a property as far as...
Okay, well, you were making other points regarding pricing and how that was somehow related to this.
Money is probably the least human thing about this. And that's what I'm getting from you, Councillor O'Neill, is that you've completely lost connection with the human component about this and the fact that, you know what, the moment that this is rubber stamped, and I expected to be rubber stamped.
There are humans that own the house, there are humans that own a house that willingly sell, and there are humans that buy the house that want to buy that house.
There's a person that bought the house and...
There are humans on all sides of the equation.
Sir, if you're the only one that gets to speak, then we'll turn off our microphones, but then we'll try to just answer your... Sir, I realize you don't want to hear. We struggle with this every day. We struggle with the realities of a market that has made it so that that house sold for $1.5...
You made the assignment?
Sir.
What's the question?
Sir, that house sold for $1.5 million, which means that someone wants to make a really, really big house out of it. And we're left with, if they do that, we don't get to have a public hearing because they have an absolute right to build a house, a very big, very expensive house. And that's the challenge. So we actually do support, and we've supported a number of options to allow for smaller homes and carriage homes and various other things so that we can have rental housing, we can have young families to the extent that it's possible in a really hot market. But at $1.5 million, we know that the finished house is going to be $3 million, and that's ridiculous. We need to get past those challenges and try to find ways so that young families can move back into our neighborhoods, and that's what we're all struggling with. We're all trying to achieve that.
Right, no, at this point in time, there is no way. There are no ways for young families that are on modest income to move...
Unfortunately, we can't prevent the person that sold this property from selling the property. The only thing that they could have done, they could have sold it with what's called a restrictive covenant, saying, "You can't tear down my house, you can't remove my trees." They could do that. The property would then sell for half a million, and a young family could afford it.
Well, that's lovely.
That's what the family that owned it could have done. We don't have any control over that.
No, I know, you're expecting the seller to have a conscience.
I'm sorry?
You're expecting the seller to have a conscience.
No, I'm just saying that if the seller sells, then we have to deal with the realities of that, which is that somebody wants to buy a really big home, and there's a market out there.
And you don't necessarily know where it came from, but are willing to buy these homes.
I get that.
Three days for 50% more than they're asking.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
I had a question about the trees. So realistically, the excavation will go right up to the property line, most likely. If the trees are along the property line, all the roots will be damaged. So realistically, there's probably 90% chance all of those trees along the foundation excavation area will have to come down. But then the homeowner will have to replace every single one of those trees? Is that what the bylaw states?
Mr. Dallywell.
Through your worship, if the trees are on, straddling both property lines, the applicant will need to seek permission from the adjacent owner to take down the trees. For tree replacement, it's not one-for-one, so it wouldn't be a direct replacement of every tree. It's a little bit more complicated based on lot size, the number of trees, and then there'll be a retention. I think there's 12 trees the applicant indicated, so that would be between two and four replacement trees.
I just wanted to clarify because I thought you said that they would have to replace all of the trees. And so I just wanted to clarify because I didn't think it was all of the trees.
Sir, 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 I'm sorry. If you do want to add something, you do have to step to the microphone. There are thousands of people watching at home with, hanging on what's happening here. I do want everybody to be able to hear what's going on, and if we step to the microphone. The speaker did say that there was 20 trees on the property line and a number of other trees on the property. And Mr. Dallywell didn't point out that it's essentially a two-for-one ratio typically that the replacement trees get handled at, depending on the number of trees, we reach a critical mass and you can't add any more trees, so.
And I just, you know, I've always had a frustration with our lot setbacks and how it affects the trees that are close to the property lines and especially on these smaller lots. You know, if the tree's fully on the neighbor's property, there's still a good chance that the roots will get damaged pretty badly. So it's a big challenge. So if 10 trees have to come down, approximately four to five trees would have to replace those 10 trees?
Through your worship, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. There are a lot of passions about this, and many of them are born out of frustration. We have the same frustrations on council because we struggle with the realities that on so many of these properties, a small home gets torn down, no one asks us anything, and a 7,000-square-foot home gets built, and quite often with more than one suite in it, and we end up with no parking for the spare cars because the house essentially is overrun and the neighborhood is overrun. But we don't get to do anything about those because they aren't subject to public hearing or a development permit under the Local Government Act. If someone wants to rezone, if someone wants to create a development, as is proposed here, a subdivision that requires a rezoning, then we have a public hearing. And the question at the public hearing is, is this a good land use? And quite often, the question council has to weigh is, is it a good land use compared to what we know will happen with a piece of property that someone paid a million or more for? If it doesn't get subdivided, and that's the challenge. We're all struggling with the same issue. So I urge us all to, I recognize the frustration and sometimes anger, but we want to hear about the impacts of this particular application and whether or not this is a good land use on this site. And we really have to, under the rules, restrict our comments as much as we possibly can to the site that we're looking at. And I thank you all for trying to go along with that. We've got Councillor Zerillo.
Yeah, you just mentioned some there, and I just wanted to just add on to that. But I also believe it's good land use based on current character and residence. Like you said, it's about what we know is going to happen, but I think it's also got to be about what we know has already happened. So I just wanted to clarify that because some of my consideration for land use is not about what's going to happen, but about respecting what's already happened. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Absolutely, okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? For the third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Okay, we'll...
The next item, item four is an application to amend the City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 945 Walls Avenue from RS11 Family Residential to RT12 Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4655.
The site is located mid-block between Blue Mountain and LeBlanc Street. It is 774 square meters in size and located within the Millardville Neighborhood Plan area. Zoning on the site into the northeast and west is RS11 Family Residential. Zoning to the south is RS11 Family Residential and RT12 Family Residential. The site and the surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the city's official community plan. The site currently contains a single-unit dwelling. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT12 Family Residential in conformance with the official community plan to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to bylaw number 4655, 2060.
Okay, and we have one registered speaker for this item who spoke before, Mr. Place at 937 Walls, Richard Place.
I'll try to be a little less passionate this time.
That sounds fine.
So this is the next lot over, and we seem to be on this slippery slope, and developers are on skis. So this is going to change the street drastically, which is already undergoing a lot of development currently, as I've already stated on the previous property in question. And I will reiterate the fact that the alleyway in the back is narrow, has not been maintained, that I can see. It does have a free-running ditch on the north side of the, I believe, pavement? pavement or hard ground, ground, or what it is. To add carriage houses to the back of this one and 939, I have a difficult time seeing it, especially two of them plus a house, considering that even the houses I've seen built recently on narrow lots are being built as tall as humanly possible. For example, in our yard at 937, when we hit about 2:33 o'clock in the afternoon, the peak from the house at 931 gives us a substantial amount of shade in our backyard. Trees limited how much gardening we can do in the backyard because there's going to be certain plants and/or vegetables that we won't be able to grow. And I fully expect that we're going to encounter the same kind of development on this lot as 939 and as the other ones that have happened down the street. But at least ones that have gone up on the other regular-sized lots won't be crammed quite so narrow. And again, my concern isn't necessarily the fact that there's a new house going there, it's the fact that the building heights are being built as tall as possible. The peaks are extremely steep, even though we don't have any snow. And the green space is just being completely eliminated on these properties. I was speaking this afternoon with one of the neighbors who's actually here, and the good news is that this is an old, unkept house that's had a variety of people go through it, including grow-ups. Doesn't necessarily mean it's the best place to split it in two, add two skinny tall houses and add a carriage house. There's nowhere for parking in the back lane. The monster house that's almost completed across the street has a gigantic garage and a gigantic driveway coming off their lane. So I have a difficult time seeing how that would even be remotely possible on that lot, let alone one split in two.
Okay, Councillor Asmussen.
Now, as we mentioned a couple times by yourselves and other speakers about carriage houses. So if the developer was to remove the fact of a carriage house on this development, because there's either, you have a choice for a development, either a carriage house on top of garage or a suite within the basement of a house. So are you saying if the development was to be split into, regardless of the other factors, you would more prefer that if the developer was agreeable to just have a basement suite rather than a carriage house?
If I had to pick the lesser of two evils, it would be the basement suite.
And so that's just my question, because I just want to get an answer to that because that seems to be an issue here. I mean, where I live, there's carriages houses along the street, it doesn't seem to have a big effect. But I guess maybe the understanding is more potential for an illegal suite in a house. I think that might be the issue there.
Sure, a carriage house might be more visible. I don't know that a basement suite, Snoopy neighbors want to be and keep track of people coming and going, whether it's family or illegal suite, et cetera. I guess the big difficulty I have is this is the first that is being done on this block of this street. These are the first lots that would be split into two and rezoned this way.
Okay.
I just see that happening at infinitum, so.
Okay, thank you. Because all these properties here, when we do subdivide, we require a pad or parking place. There's a two-car garage and one parking space off the lane for the suite or for the place on all these developments. So when you have a suite, you have to have an extra parking place, one spot for the back off the lane, if there's a laneway there. So the other issue that we face, and this is on the broader question, is that the value's in the land, not in the house. If we left this old house here, it would still become more expensive because the land that's driving, not the building that's on it.
Well, I'm aware of that, absolutely.
And so when we look at this as a council and looking forward to, by taking two houses, I think Mr. O'Neill was trying to say is it creates, maybe not to you, but two more houses that might be more affordable to some people, not everybody, we get that. And by the fact that we allow suites in every house, just not here, if you have an older house you can put a suite in, is to create more rental stock and more rental places for it. Because the federal government, maybe they're coming back into it, they haven't funded purposely-built rentals for 20 years. Province hasn't funded it. So local government's taken on the fact of Coquitlam, one of the few places that have a legal secondary suite bylaw to help address the needs of people in renting. It's a big issue, and we get it, we get it. But, you know, in council here, we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place in trying to deal with this. And so those are just my comments, but I just want to thank you for the clarification on that one point.
My response to that would be is, as far as carriage houses are concerned, and the size and the amount of a family, they would be able to, I couldn't live in a carriage house, not with our family. Probably looking at someone 18 to 25... I've been looking at someone eighteen to twenty-five, that's just gotten into the workforce, tend to be in apartments, or they're living in a, a, a co-op space, uh, carriage houses, I don't know, not with the way rents are in Coquitlam.
But, you know, once again, when we look at renting, it's, there's broad ranges for everybody, that, it's just not one type, right, so it's...
A pretty small age window.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marston.
A question for staff, uh, this one specifically, uh, does have information about the, the carriage house, so question with Walls not being an arterial route, uh, would there be normal requirements that it be, regardless of what happens here, that be, um, rear-loaded with regards to the, the lot? Whatever gets built, the parking will be off the lane?
Through your worship, that is correct.
Okay, so, um, the provision does require for lane improvements, widening, the removal of ditch, et cetera, or they're filling in of it to, to ensure there's sufficient space in there, and could you, uh, reconfirm what, what the setback is in terms of where the, where the garage, detached garage or laneway house would be?
Through your worship, the laneway house would be set back four feet, one point two metres.
Two metres.
Sorry, that's four feet minimum?
That's the minimum setback.
Minimum? Okay, and then there's, um, no specific maximum, other than how far it has to be separated from the main house, is that correct?
That is correct, they have to maintain a six-metre separation distance.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I may, um, just in terms of the servicing requirements for these types...
Mr. Johansson, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr., Mr. Mayor, um, my apologies, I just wanted to mention that with these types of, uh, this proposed development, there's full frontage requirements, both on Walls Avenue and having previous, in a previous life, uh, looked at these, uh, the lane improvements are very, very important, and, uh, we make sure that when it goes through the subdivision advisory committee, the development servicing stage, that those lanes are the full six metres and are designed to ensure that they are, uh, passable according to our subdivision and development servicing bylaw.
Man, I was only pointing that, pointing, or identifying you, because there are people at home that can't quite see you, you're off camera, and they quite often say, "Who was the guy?", or "Who was the staff person?", so I, I, I do try to identify staff persons. Okay, are there any other speakers to this item?
My name's Tara Kenning, and my house is directly across from this lane where the carriage houses are gonna be four feet away from the lane. It will greatly impact my livability, so I, and the other question I have is about the lane, and I understand that it's going to be remediated in the section of the development only, is that correct?
That's, that's typically...
I strongly urge that the whole lane is done. It's not, how can you suggest that cars can go up and down the gravel and then hit the small section of pavement when you're increasing all the traffic? The whole lane should be done if you want to put carriage houses in, because once you approve this, the rest of the properties on the Rochester side are also gonna put carriage houses, for instance, so the lane should be completely done, not just in that section. And my other point is that the setback should be further than four feet, 'cause my house is very, very close to the lane. Thank you.
I, thank you, and I do understand, I'm sure all of council understands your perspective on the improvements to the lane. Mr. Poy, you want to say something?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Albert Poy, I live at twenty-three forty Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. The reason I, uh, oppose this is because there's a few things that we seem to, council seems to not believe in, or not quite fully understand. From my perspective, anyway, the first one is, this is a small lot, and if I, uh, split it in two, I increase the value one heck of a lot, probably about fifty percent, forty percent, and you look at me and say, "Why do you think that?" Let's be honest, most of you, I've been a developer since nineteen seventy, I've also been a landlord, okay, so I do have around forty-five, maybe forty-seven years' experience in this, so I'm quite, uh, fresh off the boat, as Lottie would say, or think I am. Second reason, the more I can get small lots, the more money I can make. Next reason, if I can get four units versus two units if I build a monster house, then I make more money. You say, "Well, gosh, why?", well, let me put it this way, whether it's a suite, whether it's a laneway house, I don't know where Tinkerbell is out there that's gonna rent these at a loss. Any developer will want at least six percent, uh, net on their investment for rental house. This council, I'm sorry, people, you give me the impression you think people are gonna put a suite in, or build a carriage house and miraculously rent it out cheap. Now, gosh, I haven't found that in my life, okay? I've found they all want six percent. Now, I got out of the business a few years ago, and the reason I got out of the business is because we have no law for tax increases. And Coquitlam is bad, really bad. Typically, it increases taxes more than the RTB allows for rent increases, but, and that's exactly what's gonna happen with this project. So what happens is the landlord, after a few years, sort of forced to throw the tenant out or make it uncomfortable, because they don't like subsidizing renters. My third point, why I don't want this, why I'd sooner have a monster house, that only results in a maximum of four cars. You subdivide this in two, you get eight cars. Your density, your congestion is terrible, that's what you've got. Now, I walk through the alleys roughly two hours a day, five to seven days a week. I refer from one councillor, they're gonna make you have a garage and a one outside parking spot. That's great, because that garage never gets used to put a car in. You know what happens? It's used for storage. If you put a suite in, which there will be, plus the laneway house in most cases that I pass, there's nowhere for storage in those houses except a garage. You look at my street, I defy anyone who used to drink and drive down it at night, unless you're good at going through an obstacle course, because why? Everybody's got a garage, but you know what? The weeds are that high, nobody's ever even mowed them down with a car. Now, I used to think about these comments of mine, "Before you approve this, because at the rate we're going in Coquitlam, let's just put a sign up, let's just densify it, open for development for everybody, because you're not gonna get families moving here, what you're gonna get is rich landlords taking advantage of renters." Thank you very much. Any questions, by the way?
Are there any other speakers to this item?
All right. What's that?
All right, I, I'm just, I'm asking if there's any other speakers to the item.
Oh, okay, sorry, sir.
Are there any other speakers to the item? For the third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. Now, it takes about seven or eight minutes to reconvene, uh, with different tape rolling, and so we'll convene as soon as we're ready, uh...